Okay, good evening, everybody. The appointed hour having arrived and the quorum being present. I'll call the special town meeting to order. Ask the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and return.
Warrant for the special town meeting, Town of Free Town, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June 6th, 2022, 7:00 PM, upon a bit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, 02347. Bristol County, to either of the constables of the Town of Free Town, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Free Town who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at upon a bit Regional High School, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the sixth day of June, 2022, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. This, and you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting a test of copies thereof at the following places, the Asonet Post Office, the East Free Town Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Free Town Town Hall, Free Town Communications Center, and Free Town Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the Town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the Town of Free Town, this ninth day of May, on Odomino, 2022, the Town of Free Town Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Loebz. May 19th, 2022. To the town clerk, Town of Free Town, Massachusetts, I have this day posted a test of copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein, in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Free Town Town Hall; in East Free Town, the East Free Town Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Free Town Communications Center. Signed, Carlton E. Abbott, Jr., Constable.
Okay. So, under our color coding system that we've got going on, the special town meeting is your blue warrant tonight. And the blue vote paper, so if everybody would please just lift up your blue vote paper. If anybody does not have a blue vote paper, then they belong in the non-voting section, which is the first three rows over here. Looks like everybody's good, okay. Our quorum for a special town meeting is ten. I'm told we have 112 people here, so we're good, we can get going. Please silence your cellphone if you have one. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please come to the microphone, either here or there, there's one at the bottom of either row. If you come to the microphone, the first time, you want to hold that blue ticket so that you again know that you are a voter. You need to state your name and at the very least which side of town you live on, Asonet or East Free Town, you don't have to give your specific address. And for the special town meeting, all articles will be funded from free cash unless otherwise specified. So that will be Article One, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $55,000 for online permitting and necessary server upgrades, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article One as read, is there any discussion on Article One? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article One is adopted unanimously. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $90,002 to replace existing tasers that are malfunctioning and out of warranty date, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Police Chief, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to approve Article Two as read, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Two is adopted unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sums of money as specified herein for the following capital projects, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. Town Hall Security Upgrades, $25,000. Town Hall Window Replacements, $30,000. Election Tabulators, $21,800. F-350 Pickup with Plow for the Highway Department, $39,000. For a total cost of $115,800. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article Three as read, is there any discussion? An argument in the back about who seconded what. No, okay, we've settled it. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Three is adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article One of the November 18th, 2018 town meeting, to transfer the sum of $400,000 previously appropriated thereunder for the police station building project, for the purpose of purchasing equipment to approve, improve the radio communications in the Public Safety Departments, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to approve Article Four as read, is there any discussion on Article Four? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $800,000 to purchase equipment to approve the radio communications in the Public Safety Departments, which includes but is not limited to, purchasing and installing the equipment on three towers and the purchase of new radios for the Public Safety Departments, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Can I make a motion to amend?
Absolutely.
Make a motion to amend the amount to $450,000.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend the dollar figure in Article Five to $450,000. Is there any discussion on that amendment, only that amendment? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment is adopted unanimously, we'll now move on to the article as amended, is there any discussion on the article and the amount of $450,000? We do have somebody coming down.
Mark Rosowski, East Free Town. I have a question as to what necessitates the leasing of space on three additional towers, which the subsequent article after this is going to be the cost of leasing those towers for a period of however long the lease agreement is. When we originally built the police station, we originally planned on having somebody else build the new tower, and they were going to allow us to put our equipment on it gratis, and we elected to, the Selectmen, to amend that to where we built the tower to cost them upwards of $250,000. And we have three positions on that tower which are suitable to lease the other company to other corporations or other entities for sell for other purposes. I'd like some answers from the town administrator as to what actions have been taken to obtain those leases, to generate the revenue for the town. What the, why we have a substandard system, if we do have a substandard system, if it is, can the existing tower that we just built at an expense of $250,000 for the taxpayer be extended to cover topography? We're also going into approximately, as I believe, $3,000 a month to lease the space. We're voting now, we're doing this almost backwards, we're not putting this all together, we're piecemealing this. So we're nickel and diming the taxpayers to death here, my opinion, not saying it is, it's my opinion. For, when we haven't done our due diligence, I want to hear what substandard, how the town has suffered if we have substandard communications. I'd like to hear from the people that are submitting, you know, submitting the articles, I'd also like to hear from the town administrator, what has been done to secure leases, what actions have been taken to date.
Deb, do you want to start with that?
Do you want to start? So, I mean, you have quite of a array of questions in that. So, I think, you know that I have been here for about nine or 10 months. The first issue is that the safety equipment is substandard. There are dead zones in both the Asonet and East Free Town, that there have been numerous problems that have arisen since I've been here, that indicate that there's no, there's no communication, the police and safety officers can't relay back to dispatch for backup.
Deb, I've got a couple people in the back saying you need to speak up a little bit louder.
That need, you know, that there's, the system is definitely substandard. I have gotten numerous letters and reports from both police and fire about instances that have occurred in the town, that have re, that they've tried to radio dispatch and have not been able to. And at their, you know, they're, they're out there, and they're protecting us, and they can't get the backup that they need. So, there has been an ongoing study with the police department and the fire department about how to fix this. So one of the, the results of that study was that we need more frequencies, more towers. We did a study, it looked like if we put equipment on a tower in Berkeley and a tower in East Free Town, that we cover our two dead zones, being Asonet and portions of East Free Town. That seemed to be the most effective and inexpensive way to correct this problem. This is not a new problem, this problem has existed for a long time. The costs that we are incurring is to put equipment on those two towers, we also have to do minor upgrades to our existing tower that was just built at the police station. But we need all three of those towers to be, you know, to affect communication within the town. So, this is absolutely a necessity for our Public Safety Departments to operate effectively and to keep them safe. So that's one issue. There is, there has been a study, so we didn't just casually pick numbers or pick off, you know, information, there has been a study, we've been working with, I think it's Chip Mungo, a specialist in this area, to get the information, get the pricing, figure out what would work for the town. What happened prior to me, unfortunately, I don't have a lot of information on, I certainly can look into leasing space on our existing tower at the police station to bring in revenue, but my immediate concern was to protect our safety, our public safety officers, who have been put at peril multiple times because, because they haven't been able to radio dispatch. Not only them, but our residents. There have been many instances, and they can tell you things that have happened in our town, that they have not been able to radio for backup, and has caused issues and concerns.
So you're, you're telling the people in this room that you have not solicited any, any entities to lease that tower up to date?
Not since I've been here, no.
Sorry, I'm sorry to hear that, because it's, you know, it was a significant expenditure on the town's part. As far as using the term "public safety," it's kind of a, I don't want to use the word "scare tactic," but all of our police officers carry cellphones. I don't know if the town issue phones, I know that with the exception of the front Monty Stevens, my cellphone works everywhere in town, and I've traveled all through town. So, I'm not, I have seen occasions where officers use their cellphones versus using a radio, sometimes because a cellphone isn't recorded, a radio is, a radio calls are all recorded.
Yes.
The purposes for that, I don't know, but there is cell coverage in an emergency, I just, this seems, this seems like an open-ended deal, where we're going to open a spigot, and these people aren't going to be able to shut it off, because at that point, we're going to be a million and six, or a million and a half into it. And, it just seems, I just don't have enough info, I don't have enough information coming into this meeting that I can support it. I do support the police, I think, you know, they do, when you call them, they're pretty much there.
So I'm going to respond to the cellphone news? Yes, they have cellphones, they're not town issued. However, if you're being assaulted or attacked, or you need help, you, you don't have time to dial a phone, okay? So that's the imminent need of having to be able to reach dispatch with your radio, right? That's on there, if you see what their desk has. This is not an open spigot, this is $450,000, and it's article money. So the money needs to be spent for this article, for this purpose. It's not an open spigot, it's very deliberate, and it needs to be done for this.
I understand it's not an open spigot, but once we buy, once we build a $13 million police station, we are then obligated to maintain that police station, at whatever the costs are, no problem. Once we commit to putting to a lease, and if that lease has terms, we've got to bond that lease, so we default, we're not going to pull out, we're not going to pull a gear off of that. The other question is, if we spend $800,000 on equipment to put on towers which we don't own, have we explored the possibility of building another one or two towers at a cost of, and owning those towers, so we're not absorbing hundreds of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next coming years in lease costs? Because at $6,000 a month for a couple of towers, it, it, it generates.
They're trying to give us a demonstration right now.
So I, I have not opposed to continuing to look at the possibility of building a new tower, and the existing, the equipment that we're going to be purchasing with this money could be used and moved to a new tower. But this is the fastest way to fix this, this problem that really needs to be fixed immediately. We don't have time, people's lives are, could possibly be at risk, as well as our public safety officials. It's not something that can continue to wait.
Not to interrupt you, but using the, people's, people's lives are at risk, people's lives are at risk driving to this meeting. When you drive, when you get behind the wheel of the car, there's a certain amount of assumed risks that you take, there is some risk. But rather than obligate the townspeople to a large amount of funding going forward with something we don't own, I would rather own it. And that's, that's just my opinion, if our quorum has a comment.
In fact, I'm going to interject, because the Police Chief was waiting to say something a moment ago.
Good evening, Carlton Abbott, Chief of Police. So we did look at, let me back up. The police station project was designed for programming space and the needs of the police department, not for town-wide radio infrastructure. Town-wide radio infrastructure would include police, fire, which is a subset, includes EMS and fire, and local government. So the programming was done for the police station, and we said, we need a tower at the station. And why did we need a tower? Because the tower at the old police station had been erected at the town hall in the 1960s, a tree had fallen on it and damaged it, it was then brought up to the old police station at 225 Chase Road, and we invested some money in that, because it was deteriorating. But that tower could not hold the antenna array that was planned at the new station. And further, to Mark's point, it was understood that the town would solicit co-locators, possibly Verizon and Sprint, to locate on that tower. Debbie is new, she hasn't had time to solicit those type of vendors. That charge went to the previous town administrator, who was only here for a short period of time. So in fairness to Debbie, she hasn't had that opportunity yet, but we, we are looking to do that. In fact, we created a field next to the police station, so that those co-locators could use that field for their cabinets and other work. With respect to the infrastructure, that town is not solving the problem. We have serious radio issues in the Asonet side of town. We hired Langone and Associates, Mr. Langone is here tonight, who have done dozens, if not hundreds, of these radio system infrastructure studies. And what we found in Asonet is, if you were trying to talk from a handheld radio in any type of structure, the computer mapping says you cannot talk, you cannot request help, nothing's going to happen. And with respect to the mobile radios and the cruisers, which put out about 45 watts, many areas in Asonet, you could not talk. Now we looked at East Free Town, and we had similar problems in East Free Town. So the solution was, let's look at building towers. Well, the, the challenge of building towers include, it's about $260,000, $270,000 per tower, but you've got to find the land to, to put these towers on. You'd have to get easements, utility easements, you might have to take by eminent domain. We felt that was too much of a substantial challenge to, to resolve this, this serious crisis with the radios over the next year or two. If you're looking at towers, you're probably looking at two, three, four years. I don't object to that idea, and it may, to a point, they, they very well reduce the overall cost, but for the immediate solution, we're looking at existing cell towers to accommodate our equipment. I mean, the officers, the firemen can come down here and give you anecdotal information as to what's wrong with the system. Mr. Langone can tell you that cellphones are not the solution, you need a viable radio infrastructure, and we don't have that. So that's why we're here tonight, we're asking you for your support to resolve these issues.
Can Mr. Langone speak to whether or not the existing tower at the police station can be elevated to somehow provide some aid?
Yes. I'm just going to ask before you leave tonight, if you haven't already, that you give the town clerk a business card or your name of some way, so she can put it into the meeting minutes, but yes, absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, the tower at the police station, given the terrain and the topology of the town, you could raise it, let's say 100 feet, and it's not going to get to into the west side of town. It's just the way the topology is, and what you're dealing with is, as the chief mentioned, vehicle radios, motor radios, the higher-power units have a very good antenna, but as we all know, everybody now likes to use the personal radios. We use the cellphones, but the police and fire staff have low-power portable radios, so they only put out a few watts. So, yeah, you need to fill this, the way the topology is in Free Town, you need to put a tower at the east side and a tower at the west side to fill in those gaps, along with the one at the police station. So that, that was the whole philosophy, from day one, building a police station, the focus was, get everything for the police station, and then separately, we would look at expanding the coverage to what, as the town administrator said, there's, I mean, some gaps in the town. So the way that we looked at the solution is putting the east and west towers up, and that's, I mean, this type of approach is typical of many public safety agencies that I've worked with, we always had to expand, because you want good handheld portable coverage for the, for the first responders. And just to make a note on the cellphones, I have, I know of no agency that exclusively uses cellphones for frontline first responder communications. They're good secondary communications devices, but certainly not for frontline first responders in emergency situations, that you need to press a button and talk immediately.
Thank you. Just while, rather than at a regular selectmen's meeting, the town administrators here, we do have some large corporations who are in town, Copart, Stop &amp; Shop, who control large parcels of land, who are participating, neighbors, they're part of the Free Town family now. They have suitable parcels of land, which they could give us long-term leases if they choose to donate it for a dollar a year or a dollar a day. I'd ask that, you know, in front of 100 people, rather than in a selectmen's meeting, but there might be two people in the audience, that the town administrator solicit them, and that we approach them to participate and contribute to the community, if, if this will save the community money, and it won't cost them anything. And I'll, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
So, Rita, Brian Miller.
There you go.
East side of town. So Article Four, Five, and Six going to solve the problem? If we pass all free, is that what we'd led to believe, $850,000?
That might be best directed to our experts.
Yes, sir, that's the design that we came up with after looking at all the options, and that's.
So that's it, $850,000, and getting leases going, right? All right. So that's it, it's not more and more, just isn't here?
I don't know if it's more, no.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mark, East Free Town, can you clarify the amended amount? The original article was $800,000, and the prior article we approved $400,000, and you're amending to $450,000. Can you clarify the one with $450,000, rather than the $400,000?
The, the, we got the latest budget today, and the cost is $850,000 for everything, for all the infrastructure. So, the, the Article Five was originally printed at 800, in case Article Four did not pass, because that's repurposing some money. And so when I did the amendment, I amended it down to 450, because I need that additional $50,000 to finish the project. We just got that final vote today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll have the last word.
Mark Brogan, Asonet, I'm also the local president, Free Town Local 3213. This is absolute necessity. For us to be in a household on a medical with your family members, and have to use another family member to call 911 so we can get additional help, it's absolutely unacceptable. When we're on a fire, we can't use a cellphone inside a burning building, it's not an option. We have radios, and our radios do not work. It's unacceptable, they don't work on the highways. There's multiple areas in this town that we're on the scene, in your house, your family members are just as much risk as we are. I urge you to vote for this money, it's absolute necessity, this is something that's been pushed off for years. I've been a firefighter in this town for 17 years, the radios haven't worked for 17 years. I'm sorry, I know it's a lot of money people spend, but this benefits us, but it also benefits everybody else in this room. So please, vote for this money, thank you.
Well, we've got the motion, so we're voting on the motion as amended, this is to appropriate the $450,000, appropriate and transfer from free cash to $450,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Article Five is adopted unanimously as amended. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease or leases with Industrial Tower and Wireless LLC, and American Tower Corporation for telecommunications purposes on portions of land, including space on radio towers, to better improve communications for Public Safety Departments. Such leasing to be undertaken in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 16, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine to be in the best interest of the town, the terms of such lease or leases to exceed three years, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into such agreements and execute such instruments as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and further, to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $48,000 for such lease or leases, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, this requires a two-thirds vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. In Article Seven, there was a small typo, the number. In Article Seven, there was a small typo, the number, the dollar figure that is in words, and the dollar figure that is in digits is off by a thousand dollars. When I read the article, you're going to hear the correct dollar figure. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or and/or eminent domain certain property located at Two-South Main Street, being assessors map two-eleven, one-seventy-five-zero, and described in a deed recorded with the Bristol Fall River Registry of Deeds in Book Three-two-two-four, page three-two-one, and to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars for the purpose of funding said acquisition and costs incidental or related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into such agreements and execute such instruments as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto. And that number again is one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee does not recommend this article. Thank you. I heard a motion to adopt as read, is there a second? I hear a second, okay. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read, which is the one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. Is there any discussion on Article Seven?
Yes.
Yes?
Amy Murphy-St. Lawrence, Two-Water Street, Asona. First, I'd like to understand why we feel the need to have additional parking at the town hall.
Okay, that's best for the town administrator to take that.
Yes, so currently, we have twenty-three filled positions at the town hall. There are possible twenty-four positions. We have eighteen parking spots. So, we are constantly scrambling to find parking. And we park in the parking lot, we park along the street, we park everywhere that we can park. And that's hard enough for the employees, but then the residents wanna come and do business at the town hall, but they're not, there's no place for them to park. So, if you need to come to pay your taxes, or you need to get a permit, you can't get into the parking lot, and we've already parked along the street, and there's just no parking. So, it's, again, that's a short-term need, immediate need, that we need to have an annex to our parking lot.
So, parking at the Town Green, which has always been used in the past as supplemental parking when needed for the town hall, is no longer sufficient?
It's not that it's not sufficient, it's we have had somebody, it's dangerous to try to cross the street there. It's a very wide street, it's a very dangerous intersection all day long. We're listening to mere accidents in that, the four-way intersection. We had an employee almost get hit by a car right there this year.
And adding a parking lot on the corner of South Main and Water Street, we deem as safer?
Yes.
That entire intersection is, I would a hundred percent agree, not safe. But I don't understand how putting a parking lot is the right thing for our town center. You cannot have cars pulling in and out of there, that, the intersection is already dangerous as it is. You cannot add additional cars coming in and out of there. And I don't understand, I don't believe that that's the best thing for our town center, is to start paving over the center of it. I'd also like to understand the comments that were made in some of the additional notes about needing a septic system at one of the houses along South Main Street?
Sure.
I'm sure there, I'm one of many people that live in this historic district of this town who desperately will need septic at some point. So, interesting why this one property is being singled out for, to have a septic system on what will now be town property?
Because it's also, so, absolutely, there's multiple uses for this piece of property and reasons that it's valuable to the town. The first and probably most immediate need is to have a parking lot annexed to the town hall. Crossing Water Street is a lot less dangerous than trying to cross Main Street, which is very wide and busy, and the cars would enter through Water Street, not on, off Main Street. So, that's first and foremost. The other thing is the red building on South Main Street, which I believe might be Two-South Main, is owned by the town.
Four.
Four, thank you, thank you for that classification. Four South Main Streets owned by the town. It sits on a piece of land that is basically just the building, and there's not a whole lot of area around that building. So, if the town were ever to do anything with that building, which we will need to do in the near future, if you wanted to utilize it as a home or any kind of business or opportunity, that parcel of land next to it would have to be joined with it, and the septic to the building would be on this parcel of land that we were trying to purchase through this article. So, that is also a need. So, it, we already own the land next to it, it was taken by, I think, Tax Title years ago. The third use that this land may be valuable to the town for is if we were ever to get sewer in the town, that we might need a pump station. And that's a perfect location, because of the bottom of the hill, to have a pump station for septic, for sewer. So, it has multiple value to the town, but the imminent one is the parking area. And then, the last value to it is if we were ever to be able to, and I'm working on the engineering, but we need to fix that intersection, right? It's not, it's, there's issues with it. And it gives us some flexibility of moving road and whatnot, because we have a little more space there. So, this piece of land is valuable to the town for those multitudes of reasons, some more immediate than others.
Okay, valid point. As a person that lives, is your closest neighbor, I think purchasing the land may have its merits, to purchase it, to pave it over and put a parking lot, I think is short-sighted for the value of our historic center. If we wanna talk about a pumping station for a sewer system, I think that's a different discussion. But right now, I think this idea of using this land as a parking lot in the center of the village is incredibly short-sighted. The end of Water Street is very narrow, I don't see how a parking lot is going to, is going to work there. If we wanna talk about buying it specifically to fix that intersection, it's a different discussion. But to say that we're gonna buy it to put in a parking lot, I am vehemently opposed to. Again, I live next door, I work from home, I don't think the parking is quite as challenging as you have made it out to be.
Just as a note on this, Article Seven is to purchase, for anybody that hasn't skipped ahead, Article Seven is to purchase the property. Article Eight will be to construct the parking lot. So, it's the same conversation, but it's gonna be done in two different steps. Just so people know, if you vote on Article Seven, your vote on Article Seven is strictly about purchasing the land, it's not about actually doing any work to it, that comes in the next article.
All right, hello, Brian Miller again, from the east side of the, East Freetown, so, I do have to pack when we go downtown. So, with a lot of things we have going on, and with the development of the recreation areas and pathway pot down the road, hopefully, and the utilization more of the van stand, van stand as time goes on, and we're gonna need that parking anyways, it'd be better to have it set up and ready to go, because will it be available outside of town hall hours for parking with stickers and stuff, or is it during events and stuff? How's that gonna be?
We haven't discussed restricting it in any way, shape, or form.
All right, good. That's good, as long as it's available for parking, to utilize everything else around the area, that's always better, because there's only about four or five spots along the other green, right? Near the van stand area over there?
Yes, I think that might be five.
Yeah, so, I mean, in the end, in the acquisition of the land for, for the price, I wonder why the Finance Committee's against it, I'd just like to hear why. I know it's just a conservative move not to spend money, but...
So, that, Mark, that'd be you.
Yep, as a committee, we just...
Oh, you're gonna wanna take Deb's microphone.
As a committee, we just felt a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand was a little steep. That is our only issue.
I can see a few years in the air, but, all right, so, I, so as long as it will be usable for everybody, I think, and I have driven by town hall, and I, like I said, when we go there, you gotta be creative with parking, and I see everybody's trucks all parked all over the place, different times of day, so I know that it must be a pain in the butt to have to work there, so.
Juma? You have someone else?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Emmy Farnham, I live at Three-Water Street, so I also have a vested interest in Article Seven and Eight. Regarding the parking lot, is there a reason why the church can't be used for additional parking?
We have reached out to the church, and they are not inclined to give us daily permission, because they, they need it for themselves, and they're having, they have their own issues with parking when they have events there.
Sure. And do you know how many parking spots this new lot would accommodate?
Approximately six.
I, I have to agree with my neighbor that, you know, paving over a historical land area seems a little bit reckless, and especially being a homeowner on Water Street, that's literally, you know, to my right or left, whatever side you're looking at it from, but that, that's in my yard, so I would urge not to pass this, thank you.
Hi, Cindy Moriarty, Ten-Water Street. I really am against this. You say, a question I have for you is, a proposed septic system, where are you gonna put it? Under the parking lot?
Yes.
Isn't that what we know, that you can't drive on a septic system?
They can be designed for that, and that's not...
And how much money will that cost, for six cars to park? Are you kidding me? It just seems a little ridiculous. And I really treasure the historic area we have down there, and I love our street, and I love the four corners, and it would really be detrimental to the town center if we went forward with this, in my opinion.
Trevor Matthews, East Freetown, Asona, East Freetown. So, I guess I'll make a couple of points clear. As Michael stated, Article Eight is to just buy it, or sorry, Article Seven should buy, Article Eight is to build a parking lot. I think that, I can understand people's issues with, you know, paving over that part, I get that, I understand that. It just seems like a, you know, to solve a immediate problem we have right now. I think the long-term vision for that piece of property could be something different.
Trevor, just stand a little bit closer.
Once, you know, we, we have also have other issues at town hall that we need to resolve anyways. We don't know if town hall will always even be there, right? But I think the town owning that piece of property specifically is in the best interest of the town. It's got, as Debbie pointed out, multiple, multiple reasons, so. So, I guess I would just urge you not to just download buying this property just because you don't want it to be a parking lot. I think you should think of the long-term potential uses for that piece of property, thank you.
Emmy Murphy-St. Lawrence.
That was a motion to call for the vote, is there a second to that? Okay. For those who are not familiar, a motion to call for the vote would end discussion and cause us to immediately vote. That is the question on which we are voting now, and that question is not debatable. So, when I call for this vote, this vote is simply to end discussing this article. All those in favor?
Nay.
No, no, this is not, we do aye and then nay, don't shout out nay when it's time for aye. All those in favor of ending discussion on the article?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, I believe that was defeated, please go ahead.
Emmy Murphy-St. Lawrence, Two-Water Street, to Trevor's point about being short-sighted, there are a number of articles, or, in this meeting, which are talking about now feasibility studies for a town campus. So, obviously, as the town grows, the building that town hall sits in is most likely not the long-term solution. So, why would we spend a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars to buy a piece of property for six parking spots for a town hall that most likely in the next five to ten years will no longer reside at Four Corners?
Emmy Farnham, Three-Water Street. I just had a question, is, is there gonna be any type of monitoring in place on this parking lot? Is it gonna be open to anybody and everybody when town hall is closed?
We haven't gotten into that discussion, obviously, we have to vote to purchase the land, and then vote to put a parking lot there.
Sure.
I do know that there are cars that do park in the town hall parking lot on weekends and at nights now, and I, you know, they, you know, because I believe there's parking issues already on Water Street for residents there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just also wanna call out the, the traffic on Water Street. You know, a lot of people use our street that we live on as homeowners to bypass that intersection, so water around to Pleasant. And it is my opinion that this parking lot could potentially increase the already high volume of traffic on Water Street. People fly down that street. And if we've got an open parking lot to invite additional traffic, you know, I, I would urge against that.
Stephen Chandler, both of the East Freetown. I understand what everybody is saying about this property and a parking lot. Number four, South Main Street, as it sits, and the town owns it, is undevelopable. It's a historic building, and if we lose that building, we lose one more piece of history in the Asona Village, which would be extremely sad, because there's already enough, you know, buildings that have been razed. In fact, the one that is, was in that space that is empty now, was sold and taken apart and shipped over to Nantucket, so that somebody could build their new home, because they didn't wanna see it thrown in the dump, the townspeople, or the, the, uh, selectmen at the time, I believe. So, the only way to utilize Four South Main Street, because there is no space for a septic system, is to purchase this land next to it. And if the town is interested in preserving Four South Main Street and not seeing it razed, this is basically the only way to go. Now, whether it should be a parking lot or not, that's not what I'm here to say. But to be able to put a septic system to utilize this historic building, you know, down the road, it can be turned into a park area or something where it's not parking. Where, Jim, as we forget, have to look at it every day. But that's something to consider. So, if the town was able to obtain this land, we could possibly save Four South Main Street and also keep somebody else from developing it into something that we would have no control over. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else turning the microphone, we'll move on to a vote. Just as a reminder, this vote is only on purchasing the land. What to do with the land comes up under the following article. So, all of those in favor of Article Seven?
Aye.
There you go. Look, I'll try that again, all of those in favor of Article Seven?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm gonna ask that we count this article, because I believe it was a closed vote. So, we have counters, please? All right. Are there any folks still in the hallway who are checking people, and it would need to be counted? Well, checking folks have more or less moved in here? All right, so we just wanna count the people in the, in the seats and the, in the seat. If you are voting yes, please hold up your blue ticket, if you're voting yes.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay. All right. Alright, if you are voting yes, you can put your tickets down. If you are voting no, please raise your ticket.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay. Alright, so we had sixty-two who were in favor, we have forty-nine who are against. This requires a two-thirds vote, so sixty-two to forty-nine does not a two-thirds make. The article is defeated. Since Article Eight had to do with following up with Article Seven, I would ask at this time for a motion to postpone Article Eight indefinitely. Motion was made, seconded to postpone Article Eight indefinitely. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Eight is unanimously postponed indefinitely. A lot of contingent language there. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash $229,950.49 to supplement funding in the other post-employment benefits fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Yes, there is.
Jeff Morris is summoned. I'm all in favor of this motion. I just want to point that out first. My question is, how underfunded is our pension, pension benefits at this point?
It sounds like that might be a good question for Kim, who really hates what I just said.
Is this on?
It is.
So as of June 30th, 21, our OPEB, which is different than pension, is fifteen million dollars. Currently, we have 1.5 million put aside to cover the 15. So we are very underfunded. We only have 10% funding for our OPEB liability.
And when does this come due?
Well, it's actually already due because anybody that was an employee of ours that is retired is receiving contributions towards their retiree healthcare. So we are currently on a pay-as-you-go plan, so it's in the operating budget to cover the retirees. So it's a liability that we have now, but we have not been using any money set aside because we're so underfunded. So it's an ongoing issue. And as healthcare costs continue to increase, that liability is going to continue to grow. The only way to help reduce that is to put more money into the fund and generate more, have that money work for us and generate more earnings, whether, you know, through dividends or interest.
But obviously, this is a continually corrugating problem. It's people who hire cheaper.
Correct.
So Kim, no retiring. Anytime soon.
No comment.
Back of a second from the selectmen. You're stuck here. You're trapped. Alright, we have a motion in a second to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $75,000 to higher firm to evaluate existing conditions of the 52-acre parcel located at Chase Road and Memorial Drive, including delineating the wetlands, locating existing structures, mapping the topography, and determining possible locations for future buildings for the town use on the 52 acres of land the town owns on Chase and Memorial Drive and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Can I make a motion to amend?
Yes, we have a motion made, seconded to adopt. The article is read, and now the motion to amend will be...
To just add the words "more or less" after the 52-acre parcel, 52 acres.
Ah, okay. So the motion before us, did that in a second? Motion before us, made in a second, is to amend this article by adding the words "more or less" after 52-acre parcel.
In both places.
In both places. So we will now discuss only that amendment, only adding the words "more or less". Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? The amendment is adopted unanimously, so now on the article is amended.
Mark Posowski, Chase Road. Just to clarify, is this the parcel, the 52-acre parcel, is this east or west of Memorial Drive?
East.
So it includes the police station?
This is the police station, the elementary school, and the highway department.
Okay, we just built a police station. We didn't already do this in the process? Don't we already have that? Are we spending money to do the same thing over again? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
That is a good question.
Do you want me to respond? We have a limited amount of engineering that was done to locate the police station. My concern moving forward is, we often talk about building a new Town Hall, a new COA, and library, or combination thereof. But there are restrictions to the land up there. We have a large piece of land, but we have existing buildings. We have existing public water supplies that require us to keep a 1,000 no-touch zone around that public water supply. There's wetlands up there, and as we found out when constructing the police station, there's ledge and other issues with some of the land. So my, the thought process is, let's really figure out what we have, what's usable as land, what's not restricted, what's not already used, and make sure we know what we're doing moving forward, that we lay out the properties such that if we need to build another building in 25 years, we haven't precluded building that additional building by putting a building in the wrong place or putting it somewhere where it doesn't make sense. So that's what this study is about, is to sort of take a holistic approach. Look at the land that we have, look what's already there, look what's restricted, look at the topography, look at whether there's ledge or not ledge. And that will help in making decisions about where buildings go or do not go and moving forward with the town. And not just doing one-offs, we can put a building here, but then 10 years from now, we can't put a building over here because we put a building there. And that's what that's about.
Okay, is there any additional discussion on Article Ten?
Wayne Jay, East Freetown, Mass. Just for clarification then, but as it was before with Article Seven and Eight, how does Article Eleven combine with Article Ten? There are two different issues here. What I, just for clarification, my understanding then that Article Ten only involves the land with the elementary school, the highway department, the police station, and nothing to do with the existing COA, the previous police station, that land. Does that include that?
It would include all of that.
It will, alright.
And that's why I amended that to say "more or less", so that the town will land up there.
I believe it was said earlier that it was only on one side of Memorial Drive. Is that not correct?
No, all the town land, which I believe may be more acreage, which is why I changed that motion, motion to amend that.
It is substantially more than 52. I'm sorry, I thought you were saying that because we didn't know if it was 52 acres or not. So you meant to include
Yes.
land on both sides of Memorial Drive?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so Mark, I apologize then. I didn't realize that's what the amendment was doing.
I apologize, Mike.
Bruce, then Paul.
Bruce Holberg, Sonnet. As most of you know, I'm on the Council on Agent. Two years ago, we voted at Town Meeting to spend $550,000 to put a modest addition on our senior center. Last year, we voted for another $550,000, giving us 1.1. The Selectmen voted to have a feasibility study back in 2021. It cost us nearly $7,500, maybe close to $8,000 for that study. And that study, as far as I know to date, has just been forgotten about. We wasted $75,000 on a study that's not going to be used. My concern is that $75,000 is a lot more money than $7,500. And I'm afraid that if we do spend this $75,000, we're going to get a study, and it's going to sit on the shelf, and it will not be used at all. And then when it doesn't use, you know, things are going up and up, and the cost of living is outrageous, and we all know that. So coming back to our Town Meeting to get additional funds, 13, 14 million dollars. And we have a committee now, the Building Committee, who has more or less been charged with the buildings in town, from what I understand. There was two meetings with the library and the Council on Agent, and it was voted at a joint meeting to refer it to the Building Committee. There have been no meetings at all yet to date to pursue that. Maybe that's in the thoughts of this 75 grand. I don't know. Couldn't tell you. But my problem is that we're going to do a study, and we're not going to do anything with it. So I'm not in favor of this motion. I'm in favor of doing something. So, but this is not, at this particular time, I don't think it's feasible to go ahead and do this study. I know what you want to do. I get it. But even with the police station, it was 13 million, and I believe it was 2 million just for excavation there with land worth. So, I mean, we know what that property is. If you lived in town all your life like I have, you know that property up there is much, and a lot of it. So by the time you get through just for the excavations and stuff like that, even after the study, you're talking a lot of money. And I know we need to get a new Town Hall. I know we've got issues with the fire department now that needs to be addressed. Where's this money coming from? You know, I don't know if we've got free cash. Where have we got free cash at this point?
Uh, 2 million?
2 million. So, I mean, I just don't, I don't know. As a taxpayer, not only is a commercial owner in town, and a homeowner in town, I'm paying a lot of taxes, and so is everyone else. And just to keep doing this and not going anywhere, there's no plan. There's no plan. You know, we've been sitting, especially with the COA, we've been sitting on this for two years and gotten nowhere. Now seniors, most of them feel they're going to be passed away before we even get an addition on that place. And that is a shame. I mean, maybe down the road, I think maybe we should do, we could come back to Town Meeting and do that again. Try this again and come up with a better plan or maybe, you know, after money or whatever. Take a parcel for a specific project rather than just look at the whole property. But that's my opinion, so... I'm inclined to make a motion to refer the committee, and that committee being the Building Committee.
If you'd like to make that motion in every second, we can do that.
Well, I would like to, well, before I do that, I'd like to listen to more of Debbie.
Certainly. Paul, go ahead.
Paul, with East Freetown. I was on the planning board in town in 1975 when we didn't, we hired a company to do a master plan. And the major recommendation of the master plan was to put a town campus in the geographic center of town around where at that time the elementary school was. And the, one of the most important things you have to do here is to do this kind of a study that we're proposing on. I just think it's important to do it, no matter what we do on that land. We're going to do something in that land. We need to know where to put the first building, and the second building, and the third building. If we don't do that, we're going to make, we're going to make big mistakes and preclude, as Debbie said, preclude us building the right thing in the right place.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on Article Ten? Hearing none. Bruce, would you like to make that motion at this time? Okay. For those that didn't hear, Bruce does not wish to make the motion to refer, so we'll move right to the vote. All those in favor of Article Ten?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, I do believe that the ayes were far more than the nays. Does anybody question that count? Seeing none, the count stands. Article Ten is adopted by the majority. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to update the feasibility study for the town-owned buildings that was completed in 2014 and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt. Article Eleven is read. Is there any discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, again, I'll say Article Eleven was adopted by the majority. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Law Chapter 114, Section 18, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $7,500 for the repair or restoration of monuments in various cemeteries, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to approve Article Twelve as read. Is there any discussion on Article Twelve? Yes.
Is this including any way of stopping these people that keep vandalizing the cemetery with some sort of security of some sort? I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I'm seeing it online every day. I mean, police even going through there at night. It's a long time to be sitting there doing all that vandalism without anybody checking on them.
So as to the first part of your question, no, this article is asking specifically for funds for restoration and repair. So this by itself would not address security concerns? I believe the town, between Selectmen's Office, police, cemetery, whatnot, are working on a method to do that.
Sounds good.
As to the remaining part, that would be a police question, how often they're patrolling the cemetery. I don't know if you can even answer that in a public forum or not.
So I would decline in a public forum.
That's okay.
Alright, are there any additional questions on Article Twelve? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $15,635.57 to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 8C, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt. Article Thirteen is read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Fourteen at the June 20th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting to repurpose remaining funds of $53,969.81 originally designated to be used for a wireless network infrastructure project of the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District, to purchase technology-related supplies for the Freetown Elementary School, including any necessary installation thereof and any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Director of Finance for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt. Article Fourteen is read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $50,500 and no cents for the Chickaway Pump Station Backup Generator System, including any necessary installation thereof and any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt. Article Fifteen is read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 for the replacement of three fire outlets on East Chickaway Road, South Main Street, and Innovation Way, including any incidental and related costs and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made, seconded to adopt. Article Sixteen is read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the General Bylaws, Article ten, Personnel Classification and Compensation Plan, Section ten point eight, positions by adding the following new positions: Confidential Secretary, Police Department, Town Planner, Conservation Agent, Facilities Manager, Town Planner slash Conservation Agent, and Human Resources Director, to the list of positions contained therein, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Town Administrator. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article seventeen as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article eighteen, there is a blank line. You will hear those numbers filled in when the article is read. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash and/or overlay surplus, the sum of, from overlay surplus, one million five hundred thousand dollars, from free cash, one million two hundred six thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents, for the purpose of supplementing the Capital Stabilization Fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. And those numbers again, from the overlay surplus, one million five hundred thousand dollars, from free cash, one million two hundred six thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Okay, this was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends the numbers that I read. And the article, we have a motion and a second to adopt as read. That includes those numbers. Is there any discussion on Article eighteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eighteen is adopted unanimously. I'll now take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion is made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The special town meeting is adjourned. We are forty-five, forty-three minutes past the starting times of the annual town meeting. Would anybody like to take a five-minute break before we jump into that? I'm seeing a mix of yeses and no's, so I'm going to do that. We will reconvene at eight eighteen. Okay, folks, we're going to get started again. You thought all the fun was done. We haven't even started the annual town meeting yet. All right. Annual town meeting is the gold-colored warrant and the gold-colored vote ticket. So if you would please, everybody, hold up your gold voting ticket. This is not the building won't your gold ticket. Nothing good comes from this one. If you see somebody who does not have the gold ticket in their hand, please remind them the non-voters sit over here in the detention hall. Unless the special town meeting gets over and we hit eight o'clock, now we have fun. This is going to be good. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the appointed hour having passed about fifty-five minutes ago, and a quorum being present, I will now call the annual town meeting to order. It's the town clerk who come forward once again, read the warning, and return.
Warrant for the annual town meeting. Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, seven thirty P. M., upon a bit regional high school, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, zero two three four seven, Bristol County. To either of the constables of the town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to me at Pontiff Regional High School, one hundred Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the sixth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty P. M., then and there to act on the following articles. This, and you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Assommet Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Assommet, the Freetown Town Hall, Freetown Communications Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hereof fail not and make return of the original warrant with your dueings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown this ninth day of May, on October twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. The Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Assommet, the Assommet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Freetown Town Hall; in East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Freetown Communications Center. Signed, Carlton E. Abbott, Junior, Constable.
Okay. Once again, if you have a cell phone, please make sure it's set on silent. Once again, no one should speak until recognized. If you do come to the microphone to speak, make sure you give your name and at least your side of town. If you've come into the microphone for the first time tonight, please make sure you have the gold ticket. And for the annual town meeting, all articles will be funded from taxation unless otherwise specified. You can tell a number of people have left since our last go-around, but we've done a quick count, and we do still have a quorum. Quorum for the annual town meeting is fifty, and we count approximately eighty to ninety people in the room right now. So we are good unless half of you try to leave, in which case there are police in the back of the room. We're not going anywhere. We're in this for the long haul now. Your time to escape ran out. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Vis, general government, public safety, health and human services, public works, education, culture and recreation, interest and principal, debt, townwide fueling, and unclassified certcut assessment, retirement, insurance, Medicare and transfers, capital equipment, capital building, and other property improvements, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and requires a majority vote. So if you've been here before, we're doing this the same way we usually do. If you haven't been, then for each department, you will hear what the department has requested and what the Finance Committee has recommended. If you disagree with what the Finance Committee has recommended, then you will want to call out hold, and please hold up your gold ticket when you do that. At the end of each section, we will vote to adopt what the Finance Committee has recommended, and we will then go back and take care of anything that has been put on hold. I will tell you this evening, the Finance Committee and the departments have agreed on nearly everything, so that is going to cut down on the amount of reading because you are not going to hear nearly as many numbers as you usually do. So if you switch now to the budget handout, that is a separate handout. It looks like an Excel sheet that has gone crazy. We will begin with the general government portion. In general government, there are, there is only one line where there is a difference, and we will have that line pointed out. Otherwise, you are going to hear only one set of numbers for each department. And again, just remember, if you have questions or disagree with the recommendation, call out hold and hold up your ticket. For one fourteen, the town moderator, for personnel, four hundred ninety-five dollars, for expenses, ninety dollars, for a total of five hundred eighty-five dollars. For the Board of Selectmen, personnel, twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars, expenses, fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars, for a total of thirty-seven thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars. For the town administrator, for personnel, two hundred forty-one thousand four hundred sixty dollars, for overtime, zero dollars, expenses, thirty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars, for a total of two hundred eighty thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars. For the Finance Committee, for personnel, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars, for expenses, thirty-six hundred dollars, total, five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Reserve fund is our one time where we hear a difference. The requested figure is one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The recommended figure, the number that we will be adopting, if not on hold, is a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Hold on the reserve fund. Town accountant, personnel, one hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars, expenses, sixty-one hundred dollars, total, one hundred forty thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. For audit, twenty thousand dollars. For the Board of Assessors, for personnel, eighty thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, expenses, twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty dollars, total, one hundred two thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. For Assessors' Revaluation Program, expenses, seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars. For the town treasurer, personnel, one hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, for expenses, forty-four thousand five hundred eight dollars thirty cents, for a total of two hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars and eight cents. For legal fees, one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. For management information systems, seventy thousand dollars. Tax title foreclosures, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. For the town clerk, for personnel, one hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred eighty dollars and fifty-five cents, for overtime, zero, for expenses, thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, for a total of one hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents. For primaries and elections, for personnel, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, for expenses, twenty-one thousand six hundred eighty dollars, total, thirty-nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. For registration, personnel, one thousand eight hundred twelve dollars, expenses, eight thousand dollars, total, nine thousand eight hundred twelve dollars. Conservation Commission, for personnel, twenty-one thousand two hundred eighteen dollars and forty-six cents, expenses, thirty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, total, fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty, uh, forty-six cents, excuse me. Hold on the Conservation Commission. For the planning board, for personnel, one hundred six thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, for overtime, one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents, for expenses, seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, for a total of one hundred fifteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. Hold on the planning board. For the zoning board of appeals, for personnel, one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, for expenses, six hundred dollars, for a total of two thousand five hundred fifty dollars. For the Soil Conservation Board, personnel, seven hundred dollars, expenses, four hundred dollars, total, eleven hundred dollars. Economic Development Committee, personnel, fifteen hundred dollars, expenses, five hundred dollars, total, two thousand dollars. Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, personnel, forty-eight thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars, overtime, six hundred dollars, expenses, three hundred forty-one thousand dollars, total, three hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars. Property insurance, expenses, one hundred six thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Town reports, two thousand five hundred dollars. D E P hazmat assessment, zero dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for all except the reserve fund, the Conservation Commission, and planning board. Motion made and seconded to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures with those three exceptions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is adopted unanimously. We will now go back to the reserve fund. Somebody needs to make a motion on the reserve fund so we can talk about it. Okay, what number do you pick? At what number?
At one seventy-five.
One, okay. Motion made and seconded to adopt at one seventy-five, one hundred seventy-five thousand. Go ahead.
Tim McIntosh, as Brian said, the east side. I'll be from the west side. I just have a question. The check's going in. Exactly. So I just have a question as to why the increase from one twenty-five to one hundred seventy-five thousand.
Okay. This is a unique position because the reserve fund belongs to the Finance Committee, so they should be able to answer that.
We originally put in for the hundred and twenty-five thousand, but when we got to voting on the omnibus and the way the economy is going, we just wanted an additional fifty thousand in there to cover anything that's unexpected this year.
Or any further questions on the reserve fund? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously for one hundred seventy-five thousand. Moving on to the Conservation Commission. Is there a motion on this?
Motion to adopt as recommended by the Finance Committee?
Okay, motion is made and seconded to take the recommended figure, fifty-one thousand nine sixty-eight forty-six. And, okay, go ahead.
So I actually have the same question for both conservation and planning, so if it's okay with the moderator, I'll just kind of combine them.
Yes, we'll need a separate more motion on the planning board afterward, but we can talk about them both at the same time, sure.
So in Article seventeen of the special town meeting, we approved adding the conservation agent and planning, town planner, that's it, to the bylaws. I'm assuming the thirty-four thousand dollar increase and fifty-eight thousand increase for planning would fund those positions? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think we added twenty-five thousand dollars for a conservation agent, more as a consultant, when somebody comes in and has a complaint or an issue regarding wetlands, we need to be able to deploy somebody on the town's behalf. We have not had that in the past, so this would be a part-time position that would, and then they would advise the Conservation Commission on how to react and what to do if there's violations and whatnot. The, the amount for the planning board was sixty-five thousand, but because we have a new technician, her salary is a little bit less, so the net effect is fifty-eight thousand. But yes, that'll give the planning board and the town the ability to hire a town planner who will help with the master plan and future plans moving forward, do all, do some of that work. This is all from that.
That was my follow-up question, so thank you very much.
All right. So we vote first on just the conservation line. Are there any further questions or discussion on Conservation Commission? Okay, hearing none, the motion before you is for the recommended amount, fifty-one thousand nine sixty-eight forty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That figure is adopted unanimously. Do we have a motion for the planning board? Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt the planning board with the recommended figure, one fifteen, six fifty, and thirty-three cents. Is there any discussion on the planning board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is, budget is adopted unanimously as recommended. Moving on to the public safety budgets, which, once again, there is only one line where you'll hear a little bit of the hiccup. So, same procedure, call out hold if you need to. Police Department, for overtime, two hundred eleven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. For personnel, one million nine hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. For expenses, one hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents, for a total of two million three hundred twenty-two thousand thirty-seven dollars and nine cents. For the Communication Center, for overtime, forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents. For personnel, three hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents, expenses, fifty-four thousand three hundred twelve dollars, for a total of four hundred sixty-six thousand forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. For the Fire Department, for overtime, one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. For personnel, one million three hundred thirteen thousand two hundred sixty dollars. For expenses, one hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars, for a total of one million six hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred ten dollars. For the Building Department, for personnel, one hundred twenty-two thousand eight dollars and ninety-two cents. For expenses, eleven thousand three hundred eighty dollars, for a total of one hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. For the Gas Inspectors, for personnel, five thousand dollars. For the Plumbing Inspectors, personnel, five thousand dollars. For the Sealer, Whips and Measures, expenses, four thousand dollars. For the Electrical Inspectors, personnel, nineteen thousand dollars. For Civil Defense or Emergency Management, for personnel, two thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Expenses, seventeen thousand dollars, total of nineteen thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. For the Animal Control Officer, this is where the difference is. The requested amount for personnel is thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety-three cents. The recommended figure is thirty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. Expense figures match at eight thousand three hundred ten dollars. The requested total is forty-seven thousand two hundred ten dollars and ninety-three cents. The recommended total is forty-five thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars. For the Tree Ward, for personnel, fourteen thousand two hundred dollars, expenses, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, for a total of forty-four thousand ninety dollars. For a total of $44,900. And for the Harbor Master, $100. I will now accept a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for those budgets. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures in the Public Safety Budgets. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. Education Budgets. If you don't vote for these, the lights will shut off in the middle of the session. For the School Committee, Personnel, $4,424. For the various regional school assessments, for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Assessment for Education, For the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Assessment, Transportation, $273,697. Free Town Lakeville Other Charges, zero. Regional Debt for the new middle school is $99,96. Regional Debt for the old middle school is $58,852. Regional Debt for Pool Rehab, zero dollars. Regional Debt for Athletic Facilities, zero dollars. For a total of $13,106,655. For the Bristol County Agricultural High School, $125,792. For the Old Colony Vocational School, $532,695. For the Bristol Plymouth Vocational School, $572,70. I will now take a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures. Motion is made and seconded to so adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. For Public Works, for the Highway Department, overtime, $2,000. Personnel, $515,690. Expenses, $156,935. For a total of $674,625. Snow and Ice will be one of those ones that has a difference. For overtime, Snow and Ice, $20,000. For expenses, the requested figure is $180,000. The recommended figure is $130,000. The total Snow and Ice request is $200,000. The total Snow and Ice recommendation is $150,000. For Streetlamps, $4,500. For Trash Collection and Spuzzles, $780,245. For the Transfer Station, for Personnel, $134,350.56. For overtime, $1,500. For expenses, $153,100. For a total of $288,950.56. For the Cemetery Commission, for Personnel, $9,868. Expenses, $27,160. For a total of $37,028. I will now take a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for Public Works. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures for Public Works. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. Health and Human Services, for Health Inspection, for Personnel, $146,460.40. For expenses, $63,050. For a total of $209,456.40. Hold on the Board of Health. Council on Aging, for Personnel, $142,399.93. For expenses, $17,388. For a total of $159,787.93. For Veterans Services, the Veterans Agent, Personnel, $12,240. Expenses, $150,000. Total, $162,240. And for Memorial and Veterans Day, expenses, $2,200. I will now take a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for the Council on Aging, Veterans Services, and Memorial and Veterans Day. Motion is made and seconded to so adopt. Is there any discussion? On just those, not the ones on hold. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets were adopted unanimously. We now go back to the Board of Health. Okay, you have a motion on the Board of Health. All right, motion made and seconded to adopt the recommended figures on the Board of Health. We do have this one on hold for discussion.
Tim McIntosh, once again. By my calculations, that's a 42% increase over last year's appropriation. Why? I just don't know why.
All right, is there anybody here from the Board of Health? Or if not, the Town Administrator?
Yes, so there is a lot of changes in the Board of Health this year. Given the pandemic, that has changed the whole department and the way that it addresses things, right? In the past, we think the Board of Health is just doing septic systems and maybe restaurant inspections, but it has evolved. The Board of Health is responsible for a lot within the town. So the department has grown, the personnel has grown. We have a full-time Board of Health Agent, and this year we have a part-time assistant to the Board of Health Agent. And so that's an increase in the budget for Personnel. That's also due to one of the businesses in town that is going to require more services from the Board of Health. So a big, a large increase is due to the Personnel line on that. It's pretty much the major increase, this Personnel for that department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on the Board of Health? Hearing none, the motion again was for the recommended figure, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the Board of Health is adopted unanimously. On to the Culture Budgets, for the Library, for Personnel, $144,753.26. For overtime, zero dollars. For expenses, $47,800. For a total of $192,553.26. For the Cultural Council, for expenses, $3,500. For the Historical Commission, for expenses, $500. For the Parade and Fireworks Committee, for expenses, $3,000. I will now take a motion to adopt those budgets as recommended. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the Culture Budgets as recommended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. Nice programming plug, too. We are going to have fireworks this year. Parade will return next year, but the fireworks return this year. On to Debt Service. For the Retirement of Debt, Free Town Elementary School, Principal Excluded, $600,000. For New Police Station, Principal Excluded, $500,000. For the Floods of 2010, Principal Non-Excluded, $70,000. For a total of $1170,000. Interest on Long-Term Debt, Free Town Elementary, Interest Excluded, $18,200. New Police Station, Interest Excluded, $78,750. Floods of 2010, Interest Non-Excluded, $700. For a total of $97,650. And Interest on Short-Term Debt, this year is zero. Let's take a motion to adopt those budgets as recommended. Motion is made and seconded to so adopt. Is there any discussion on those budgets? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those articles are adopted unanimously. Unclassified, Cert Pen Assessment, $1,856.85. Retirement and Pension Contractions, $1,355,010. Workers' Comp, Personnel, $91,650. Unemployment Benefits, $20,000. Health Insurance, Personnel, $1,786,703.44. Life Insurance, $2,200. Medicare, $72,000. Liability Insurance, Expenses, $63,950. Townwide Fueling, $250,498. Transfer to Special Revenue Long Pond Revolving Fund, $15,000. Transfer to Trusts, OPED Liability, $225,000. I ask for a motion to adopt those figures as recommended. Motion is made and seconded to so adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, those budgets are adopted unanimously. On to the Capital Equipment, for the lease of existing police cruisers, $61,290.75. For the lease of new police cruisers, $55,309.25. Purchase of police equipment, zero. Lease of existing fire AMS apparatus, $427,275.71. Lease of new fire AMS apparatus, zero. Purchase of new fire AMS equipment, zero. Lease of existing highway vehicles and equipment, $46,568.80. Lease of new highway vehicles and equipment, $58,000. Purchase of highway equipment, zero. Purchase of cemetery equipment, zero. Purchase of all others, zero. For a total of $648,444.51. Capital and Building Improvements, Town Buildings and Other Property Improvements, $180,000. Fire Station Improvements, zero. For a total of $180,000. I will ask for a motion to adopt the Capital Budgets as recommended. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the Capital Budgets as re, as recommended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Capital Budgets are adopted unanimously as recommended. I am ridiculously impressed. That took us 25 minutes, that even takes over an hour. So this is what happens when everybody agrees, and you only have to read the numbers once. Really, that is wonderful. Thank you, that helps us move along. Article Two. To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town, as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the General Laws, as amended for the fiscal year 2023, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. In this instance, all of the recommended, all of the requested figures are recommended, so you'll hear the numbers once. Moderator, $165 per meeting. Board of Selectmen, $6,000 per member per year. Town Clerk, $66,950. Board of Assessors, $5,000 per member per year. Tree Warden, $23 per hour. Highway Surveyor, $75,647 per year. Regional School Committee, $1,106 per member per year. Water and Sewer Commission, $250 per member per year. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Two using the recommended figures. Is there any discussion on Article Two? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Two is adopted unanimously. Article Three is going to be one of those instances where the dollar figure in words and the dollar figure in digits is not exactly the same. You will hear the correct number read out loud. To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $1,353,941 to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 23 with an appropriation for the following direct expenses. Personnel, $95,836. Expenses, $1,183,105. Total, $1,278,941 of the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the sum of $75,000 for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund as part of the unanimous budget. With all costs totaling $1,353,941, and supported with $33,705 from certified retained earnings, and with $1,320,236 from Water Sewer Enterprise receipts, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as recommended. Is there any discussion on Article Three? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Three is adopted unanimously. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to amend the General Bylaws, Article 29, Revolving Funds, Section 29.6, authorize revolving funds by inserting there in the following language, creating an additional revolving fund. Said fund to be used by the Board of Health pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as follows. Revolving Fund Program or Purpose, Board of Health Vaccine Program. Offset Cost of Vaccines. Supplies, Wages, and Capital Needs. Department Receipt to be credited to Fund. Fees collected for medical billing for vacancies and administrative charges. Oh, I'm sorry, vaccines, that's correct. Fees collected for medical billing for vaccines and administrative charges. Representative Authorized to Spend, Public Health Nurse. And further, to establish a fiscal year spending limit of $5,000 for said new revolving fund, and to transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of purchasing an initial supply of vaccines, along with medical supplies related to the administration of the vaccines, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Four as recommended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to establish the following fiscal year spending limits for each revolving fund established under Article 29 of the General Bylaws, and/or take any action relative thereto. Board of Selectmen, Annual Town Report, $500. Police Department, Exams, $100. Police Department, Firearms Safety Course, $7,000. Board of Selectmen, Long Pond, $14,000. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Five is adopted unanimously. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $7,200 for the purpose of updating a two-year actuarial, actuarial, other post-employment benefits study, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Treasurer and Tax Collector. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $2,500 from the sale of cemetery logs account to be used by the Cemetery Commission for maintenance and improvements at the Ascent Bearing Ground and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 115, Section 9, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $500 for the maintenance of veterans' graves, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Eight as read. Is there any discussion on Article Eight? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eight is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate in the general fund and transfer the sum of $135,000 from a special revenue receipt reserved for appropriation account known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, pursuant to National General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, for the purpose of funding video service agreements and outfitting the police station community room with the necessary equipment to film and broadcast meetings, including any incidental and related costs, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to amend the General Bylaws, Article 1, Town Meeting, Section 1.1, posting warrants by deleting there from the strike-through language and inserting therein the bold and italicized language as shown below, and/or take any action relative thereto. And this is the resulting language. Every town meeting shall be called by a warrant directed to a constable or other duly appointed person by posting copies of said warrant at the town hall, police station, and at each post office within the town at least 14 days before the time of holding the annual meeting, and at least 14 days before the time of holding any special town meeting. Additionally, every warrant shall be published on the town's official website. This was submitted by the Chief of Police. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article ten, is there any discussion? Yes, there is.
So, in years past, I remember hearing some complaints and consternation that we weren't publicizing the town meeting warrants enough. This bylaw change would reduce it from six places to only four and those four would be less than half of the town-owned buildings. Is that really the desired, the desired will of the voters? I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna address that question perhaps to the police chief because he sponsored the article and then to the selectmen if they have any input on it as well.
So, I got hooked into this, but I was asked to make some recommendations because I'm the gentleman who has to go post these. And I can tell you it's my experience that in a couple of the locations that have been deleted, nobody ever read them. And I know this because I would see the little cards for babysitters or, you know, stuck in there and they never changed. They sat there until I posted another, another notice. It seems to me we have a division of people, those in the digital world and those that aren't. That's why we added the town website. We also expanded the number of time for the posting to fourteen days. I thought this was, as a suggestion, a happy compromise. So, that's, that's my explanation.
Okay, for the selectmen, do any of the selectmen have input?
No, I don't have a staff.
Okay.
Mark, come on.
All right.
Do you want to amend the article?
All right, what would you like your amendment to be?
To only add, only keep the addition of, every warrant shall be published on the town's official website. So, basically, we're gonna strike out the strikeout and the addition of the at Town Hall Police Station and the post office of the town.
Okay, does that have a second? All right, so the motion that was made and seconded is to amend this article such that the only change to the existing language would be to add additionally, every warrant shall be published on the town's official website. So, nothing else about the current bylaw would change. We would just now specify that it also be posted on the website. That is the motion to amend that is before you. Does anybody have any discussion on that, amending only? Okay, hearing none, we are voting only on the amendment right now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I believe that the ayes were more favorable, does anybody doubt, doubt that decision? Okay, seeing none, the amendment is adopted. So, we now move on to the main Article ten, which now the only thing that Article ten will do is add the website as a posting location. It will make no other changes to the existing bylaw. Is there any discussion on Article ten as amended? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article ten as amended is adopted unanimously. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of National General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two G, thereby allowing disabled veterans who place their homes into a trust to continue receiving property tax exemptions under Clauses twenty-two A through twenty-two F of said Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors, it requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion made and seconded to adopt Article eleven as read, is there any discussion on Article eleven? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article eleven is adopted unanimously. In Article twelve, there is a typo. The typo does not substantially change the meaning of the petition. I am gonna ask for a unanimous consent in the, to see if the town will vote to amend Article three, Section three point two U of its general bylaws relative to the fee schedule for the transfer station. The word "but" then appears, it should have been the word "by," B-Y. Does anybody object to that word being corrected when we do Article twelve? This is a petition, so I can't just tell you it's a typo, I have to ask, does anybody object to that? Seeing none, we will read the article with the correct word. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to amend Article three, Section three point two point U of its general bylaws relative to the fee schedule for the transfer station, "by" deleting all current language therein and inserting in place thereof the following. Each household shall be entitled to two transfer station stickers annually at no charge. The Board of Health may establish reasonable fees for additional stickers and for the use of the transfer station. Such fee schedule may be implemented after a public hearing, the date, time, place, and subject of which must be published seven days in advance on the town's website and not less than six public places in the town. Any amendments to the fee schedule adopted during such public hearing shall take effect no sooner than ten days after the publication on the town's website and not less than six public places in the town. This was submitted by petition, it requires a majority vote. Your warrant says that the Finance Committee takes no position, however, they met this evening and they now do not recommend this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article twelve as read, is there any discussion on Article twelve?
Yes.
We've got them up there for sure.
Since we have both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee not recommending, can we just have either or both of them explain why they do not recommend?
Okay, I'm gonna ask the Finance Committee first.
We are not recommending simply because it raises twenty-two plus thousand dollars to offset the fees. If we do not collect it from stickers, then it's just gonna have to get added to the tax base.
Okay, and the selectmen are the Board of Health, so we'll turn to one of the selectmen slash Board of Health now. This is like looking at who has to take out the trash tonight, nobody wants to get out.
Jared's here, so... So, our idea of why we didn't recommend this was because we felt that the people who are utilizing the services should be the ones to absorb some of the burden, hence buying stickers to use for facilities. It was really that simple. Rather than putting the burden on everyone, put it on the individuals who are using the services.
Okay, Paul, go ahead.
Hi, Paul Stacey from Free Town.
There you go.
The east side of Free Town. I was, I put this article together, this number twelve and number thirteen, because you go to the transfer station, and I don't use it that often, but you go there and you pay for everything that you bring. And the worst part is that you have to go in there and pay thirty-five dollars for a permit. So, you know, we, as taxpayers, pay a ton of money to support this town, and you can see it tonight. These articles have been flying through, a lot of money. It seems to me that the town could give back two things. Couple of passes to the transfer stations to the people that use it and go in there and have to pay for everything they bring. We pay for our garbage bags and a long time ago, we paid for nothing to get rid of our trash. And to use the beach, at least this year, the beach is now going to be under control of the town and only town residents are gonna be able to go to use the beach. So, it would be nice to have people that have children to go in there and not have to pay a fee for, for a sticker. Just get the stickers, they're taxpayers, give them something in return for the money that we're spending. My kids went there when they were little, my kids are grown married and there was never any fees and we had, at the beach, we used to have lifeguards, that's where they would have a swim. So, I, I just, people that are here, please vote this in, vote this one in the next one, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on Article twelve? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I will tell you, I believe that the ayes won, but I believe it's close enough that I'm gonna ask to count this article. This again is the gold ticket, so I guess the gold ticket does get you something tonight, it might get you free dump stickers. All those who are in favor of Article twelve, please raise your gold ticket now. Okay, the yeses being forty-four, the noes being twenty-six, Article twelve is adopted by the majority. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to amend Article three, Section three point two of its general bylaws relative to the powers and duties of the Board of Selectmen by adding the following. Section three point two point V and/or take any action relative thereto. The fee schedule Town Beach. Each household shall be entitled to two Town Beach stickers annually at no charge. If stickers for the Town Beach are expanded to other parks and/or recreational properties, then Town Beach, in quotes, as used in the first sentence, shall be interpreted to include those, include those parks and recreational properties requiring stickers for access. The Board of Park Commissioners or Board of Selectmen in the absence of a Board of Park Commissioners may establish reasonable fees for additional stickers and for use of the Town Beach. This section shall not apply to those properties owned and managed by the Conservation Commission. And I will tell you, in the second to last sentence, I believe of the warrant, it's printed, and for Sue of the Town Beach, that is a true typo, the original petition did correctly say "use," so that's the language we're voting on. This was submitted by petition, it requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee, again, originally had no recommendation on this article, they now recommend against this article. Okay, motion, Article thirteen is, motion is made and seconded to adopt as read. Is there discussion on Article thirteen? There sure is, go ahead.
Actually, same question as last time, I assume the answer is the same, but I figured I'd ask anyway.
Okay, all right, Finance Committee.
Again, it's to offset, we're now paying for police details at the beach and other fees, so it offsets a little bit above that and if we don't collect that, again, it reverts to taxpayers.
Okay, selectmen, do you guys want to chime in on this one?
Same position, the selectmen say the same, the same as the Finance Committee, Brian, go ahead.
Do you happen to know the average revenue generated through the beach stickers yearly?
That way, that might be a keen question.
Only because we've added so much of the maintenance of the Town Beach now.
So, in the past, it has been combined, I believe, with the transfer station stickers. So, currently, we have the sale of separate beach stickers and to date, which is this fiscal year only, we have a hundred and twenty dollars in beach stickers.
So, I guess the figures don't lie. Not a big loss in revenue from Town Beach stickers. Plus, what happened this year or last year, I believe, it used to be one sticker actually in both places. Now, it's two stickers. So, we took care of the first one, let's take care of the second one, so people can go to our Town Beach that we pay for and we maintain through our tax dollar, so they can enjoy themselves.
Okay, is there any further discussion on Article thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, that was much clearer, Article thirteen is adopted by the majority. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Article ten, Personal Classification and Compensation Plan, Section ten point six, Work Policies, C. Paying holidays to add Juneteenth Day to the list of legal holidays recognized within the meaning of this general bylaw and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the town administrator, it requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee truly does take no position on this one this time, it did not change the lines. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article fourteen, is there any discussion?
Yes, just a quick question, is this a holiday that if it falls on a Saturday or Sunday, that's observed on Friday or Monday? Or is it just a set holiday?
Yes, our town's attorney has said yes. Are there any further questions or discussion on Article fourteen? Jen's coming down.
I have a question, Jen, I'm listening to anyone. Where did this come from exactly? Is this a state holiday all of a sudden?
Just, just move forward a little closer and say it again.
I'm just wondering where this came from, is this a state holiday now and federal holiday or?
Well, I'll do the attorney answer again.
Lauren Goldberg, three U Town Council, it is a state holiday, it's a legal holiday under the general laws.
So, if that year required to adopt it?
If I'm not mistaken, the employees all got this off last year anyway because it was a state holiday. Are there any further questions or discussion on Article fourteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease purchase financing agreement with All American Investment LLC to acquire police cruisers that may be financed by the issuance of debt for a term up to the useful life of the property being three years, to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to National Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C. And furthermore, the sum needed to satisfy the first year payment of this agreement will be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget section of the omnibus budget for fiscal year twenty-three and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police, it requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee, again, has taken another look at this and they now recommend this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article fifteen as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease purchase financing agreement with All American Investment LLC to acquire a new dump truck that may be financed by the issuance of debt for a term up to the useful life of the property being four years, to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to National Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C. And furthermore, the sum needed to satisfy the first year payment of this agreement will be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget section of the omnibus budget for fiscal year twenty-three and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor, it requires a two-thirds vote. Again, the Finance Committee now recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article sixteen as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-eight and a half, allowing for the appointment of a parking clerk by the Board of Selectmen to supervise and coordinate the processing of parking notices and further to amend the general bylaws, Article thirteen, Use of Street Sidewalks in Public Places, Section thirteen point nine, Exemptions and Penalties, five penalties by striking out the language, National General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-eight, from the first sentence and inserting in place thereof the language, National General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-eight and a half, in place thereof, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police, it requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article seventeen as read, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article eighteen is quite long, I will ask for a motion to waive the reading of Article eighteen. Motion is made and seconded for me to shut up. Is there any discussion on this motion? Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to waive the reading of the article is adopted unanimously. I am just gonna ask that the police chief summarize the article before us, since we didn't read it, if he would not mind.
When I was looking through the bylaws in reference to parking at the boat ramp, I started going through the historical history in town, and I discovered that years ago, the town had accepted two provisions of the Mass. General Laws relative to parking tickets, and they were subsequently repealed by the legislature. The legislature gave the town the opportunity, within a one-year window, to adopt an appropriate section for parking tickets. The town never did that. So, the article you just voted on was to cure that particular problem.
Thank you. Okay, this is submitted by the police chief, requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. We have a motion made and seconded to adopt the article as written. Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 18 is adopted unanimously. Article 19: "Article 19 references special legislation. That was in fact a handout in the lobby, so you'll wanna check to make sure that you did in fact get that." Article 19: "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation substantially as set forth below, meaning in your handout. Relating to the appointment of retired police officers as special police officers in the town, provided however that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition and/or take any action relative thereto." This was submitted by the Chief of Police. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 19 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 19 is adopted unanimously. Article 20: "To see if the town will vote to change the name of Southeast Hill Road to Birch Road and/or take any action relative thereto." This was submitted by the Planning Board. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Second, motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 20 as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, all opposed? Article 20 is adopted unanimously. Article 21 and 22 are going to be a little bit interesting. Article 21 and 22 are seeking two different ways to do the same thing. Currently, the Board of Selectmen also serves as the Board of Health. That's by default, the Selectmen are the Board of Health, because nobody else is. Both Articles 21 and 22 on tonight's warrant seek to separate the responsibilities of the Board of Health from the Board of Selectmen by creating a separate Board of Health. The difference is in how the members of the new independent Board of Health would be selected. Article 21 would create an elected Board of Health. Article 22 would begin the process of creating an appointed Board of Health. I'm going to ask now for two motions. One, the first one, is to waive the reading of Articles 21 and 22. Lightning speed. That motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion on not reading the articles? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is adopted unanimously. I am now going to ask for a motion that we consider Articles 21 and 22 together, but vote on them separately. That motion has been made and seconded, and what that is, is we have to vote on them separately, but this allows us to not have to have the same conversation twice. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have one opposition, so the majority has adopted that motion. So, what we're going to do now is have a general discussion on whether we should have a separate Board of Health, and if so, whether it should be elected or appointed, after which we will take votes on the articles individually. So, the floor is open. If anybody has a position on whether to separate the Board of Health or whether it should be elected or appointed, now is your opportunity. Go ahead.
Is this gonna be the situation where if we choose elected and nobody actually runs or gets voted in or anything, that they will then be appointed, much like other boards in town?
Nope, we're hearing no.
Mr. Moderator, three U. If there's a vote to have the Board of Health be a separate elected board and no one runs for that office, then the person who receives the most votes as a write-in is elected to the position.
What if nobody runs at all?
Any person whose name is written in, who has the most, excuse me, the most votes of anyone written in, would become the elected official. If no one wrote in anyone's name at all, then the Select Board and the remaining members of the elected Board of Health, if there are any, would make an appointment until the next annual election, and at that point, the remainder of the office would appear on the ballot at that election.
So, you're gonna have the best of both worlds if we go for an election.
Again, Paul Sadek. I should have been on the Board of Health, because I was a Selectman here, and it's a very difficult position to be in if you don't have the background to be on the Board of Health. And I would recommend that if we adopt the article, the article we should adopt is an elected Board of Health, not an appointed Board of Health, because I personally don't like to, you can't put all your eggs in one basket, and I don't like to have the Board of Selectmen have that much power to keep filling these positions. I was on the board. I didn't wanna fill positions that way. So, I suggest that if the town wants to have an appointed, a full-time Board of Health, then they should do it by and vote. That's my opinion.
Is there any additional discussion on Board of Health? Appointed, elected, keep it the Selectmen, don't have one at all? Okay, hearing none. Excuse me. We're gonna vote on the articles separately. What is going to happen is if Article 1, Article 21 passes, then you have chosen an elected Board of Health, and we will ask that you basically ignore Article 22. If Article 21 fails, we will vote on Article 22. If that then passes, the choice is for an appointed Board of Health. If both articles fail, the Selectmen will remain the Board of Health. So, I will ask for any motion on Article 21. Okay, motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 21, which is the elected Board of Health article. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I hear two opposition. The majority was a clear in favor of Article 21. Article 21 has been adopted by the majority. For that reason, I will now ask for a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 22. Motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 22. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is adopted unanimously. Article 23: "To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Freetown zoning map in accordance with a list of changes as en filed at the Town Clerk's Office at the Town Hall, 3 North Main Street, the Senate Mass, and/or take any action relative thereto." You also have some handouts that demonstrate that. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. The Planning Board recommends this article, and we will now, if there is a report from the Planning Board, hear it.
As stated by the moderator, this was submitted by the Conservation Commission. Most of these properties are held by the town, Freetown, or the state. They are not privately held, except for one, which is being turned over to the state, I believe it is. We came informed, we had a general discussion. There was no objections in our public hearing, and we recommend this passes. It simply is changing the zoning from either residential or general to open space and recreation.
Just remind, we all know who you are, but remind us.
Bob Joe's Chamber of Planning Board.
There we go. All right, thank you. Do we have a motion on Article 23? Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 23 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 23? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 23 is adopted unanimously. Article 24: "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of supplementing the Capital Stabilization Fund and/or take any action relative thereto." This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article be funded in the amount of $200,000. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 24 as recommended in the $200,000 amounts. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 24 is adopted unanimously. Article 25: "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of supplementing the Stabilization Fund and/or take any action relative thereto." This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article be funded in the amount of $300,000. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 25 as recommended, which is the amount of $300,000. Is there any discussion on Article 25? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 25 is adopted unanimously. Article 26: This is it, folks. I'm truly, I'm amazed, because I really thought this was gonna take a lot longer. "To see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws Article 3, Powers and Duties of Town Officers, Section 3.3, Town Administrator, Subsection C Qualifications by deleting therefrom the straight through language and inserting therein the bold underlined language as follows and/or take any action relative thereto," and what you will hear now is the resulting language. "The Town Administrator shall be appointed on the basis of their educational, executive, and administrative qualifications and experience. Their education may consist of a master's degree in public administration or a master's degree in business administration, or a master's degree related to either field of study granted by an accredited degree granting college or university or the equivalent, as determined by the Board of Selectmen, and their professional experience may include three to five years previous municipal experience, provided however that the qualification shall be determined by the Board of Selectmen as the appointing authority in the best interest of the town." This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Hold on one second. Motion is made and seconded to adopt the article as read. We now have a proposed amendment. Go ahead.
I was just hoping that we could go after professional experience, bring back shall and the way man.
Okay, so the motion before us is toward the end, where it says, "And their professional experience may include three to five years." The amendment would change it back to, "And their professional experience shall include three to five years." Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, that amendment has been made and seconded. We will now move on to a discussion only on amending the word "may" to "shall."
Tim McAduch once more. If we're going to make that amendment, can I also recommend changing, getting rid of the maximum, because that would read, "Professional experience shall include three to five previous, three to five years previous municipal experience." So, if we get someone that's been doing this for ten years, they would not be qualified to work in the town of Freetown.
That's a fair point. So, you would like to take out two-five?
Yes.
Okay. Jared, would you be willing to amend your amendment?
I guess I should ask Town Council that if that is something that I should be concerned with.
Sure, go ahead. We can have no Town Administrator in a lesson. You three have to come in every day.
Mr. Moderator, three U. If it's going to say "may include," perhaps you just wanna say, if it's gonna say "shall," "shall include," maybe go back to at least three years.
I'm okay with that.
All right, and somebody second that change? Okay, so what we have before us now is an amendment, "Professional experience shall include at least three years." Professional experience shall include at least three years. Is there any more discussion on that word change? Nope, we no longer have two-five. It said "shall include at least three years." Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the amendment as amended is adopted. So, what we now have is the main motion, which is to adopt this article saying, "Experience shall include at least three years." Is there any discussion on the whole thing? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously. For the love of all things that are good, please, somebody motion to adjourn. Motion submitted and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted by the majority. Somebody can stay here. The rest of us will go home. Thank you, folks, very much for coming out tonight. We will see you at the next town meeting.